Yes, sir.
It is eight twenty-nine and we are on to action items in our agenda. Consent agenda approval of one, budget finance purchasing A through D and two, A through D, I believe, as one, one item.
The first item that we have is the total amounts of checks written for August 2017. This month, we had a total of one million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents in checks written.
We have a budget adjustment, too. Did I see one that?
Yes. We did receive the award letter for our elementary breakfast program, and so we're asking for approval of the budget adjustment request. For that, it is a total of thirty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars with twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-one that was designated to Harrison Schmidt and six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars that was designated to Sixth Street. I wasn't on the application side of things, so I don't know if the other schools did not approve to have the breakfast after the bell. I just know that that was the award letter that I received.
What two schools was that?
It was Harrison Schmidt and Sixth Street Elementary.
And then we, we also have a, award of bids and proposals?
Yes. We have one proposal. It was for speech-language services, and we had three responses. We had Arter Health Solutions, Presence Learning, and Advanced Incorporated. Arter Health Solutions did have the most amount of points, but we wanted to go back and get more information, and so we, we requested that we get a best and final offer from all three of the people that, that had proposals in. And Arter Health was, is located in Florida, and so because of Hurricane Irma, they were not able to respond with the better, you know, a best and final offer. Presence Learning, they were the second place, which we actually are asking to award to them. They were able to give us the offer that, you know, based on the number of students that, they gave us an individual amount for however many students that we would, are gonna have in the speech-language program for them. And if we're looking at thirty students at two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars, that would include a four hundred and twelve dollar evaluation fee that may or may not be charged. So it can be less than that, but it would not be more than that. But based on the two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars per student at thirty students, we're looking at an award of eighty-two thousand, eighty dollars.
And then no donations, right? I didn't see any donations, correct?
No.
And any transportation items?
No.
Very well. Any questions from the board on consent agenda items? One, A, financial reports, A, one, total checks written, the budget adjustment requests, and the award of bids? Seeing no questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Still moved?
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, one, A, one, B, and C, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is, on our agenda is individual action items, and the first item is B, consideration and approval of the construction manager at risk.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am?
I was gonna make a motion to table it. I'm not ready to decide. Is anybody else ready to decide?
Do we have any information from administration on, on that?
Just what was presented this evening.
Presented.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we table this decision. I would like more time to think about it. It's just something new to me. I'm not that comfortable about making a decision about it tonight. If I'm forced to make a decision, I'll vote no, simply because I am not that comfortable yet. I'd like some time to think about it. I make a motion that we table it.
Got a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I can understand the hesitancy. I would like to see if you guys would be willing to meet with him and let him go over the plan with you and, and all the benefits and stuff. Do you think that might help and give you more information? And if casual, will you consider?
I don't know. It's just such a foreign idea to me, and I hate to make big decisions.
It was tough, too.
And whether it has a consequence, you know, 'cause you know what? I've been scarred by that Verizon thing, okay? Because we sat here, sat there one night, heard about it, voted on it, and I sort of like lived to regret it. But, so I'm just don't, I'm just not that comfortable. I think I need to think about it, and maybe we need to listen to it again. That's just my personal thing. I'm not ready to make a decision tonight. It's just too new. It's too big of a step. I, I, I just can't make a good decision tonight.
And I respect that. That's why I think it would be a good idea if we could get him to come in and meet with you, you know, just a, like, like an hour for them, him to talk to you. I think he, the way he explained it to us.
We didn't understand it first.
We didn't understand it either at first, and, and I, I was like you, and then the more I listened to him and the more things that were brought out, I could see the benefit of it. But I would feel really comfortable having you guys listen to his presentation and show you the, the things that we, that we talked about.
Actually, my hesitancy is hearing it from him again. I'd like to hear it from somebody else.
Okay.
You know, in the old days, there was a guy named Ray at ASA. Is he still there, Ray? I think he, you know, he designed GW Stout, that architect. I, I would like to hear it from a different source myself, I think.
I can, I can arrange that if you guys would like me to.
Or something, you know, or, and I don't do, other companies do freebies, like that sort of stuff or not, or is there somebody else?
Or is there another school district that used the same?
Hey, that would be a good idea.
The same type of thing.
Can we talk to a school district who has used him in this type of a situation? That would be great. That's a good idea.
Yeah, he did Lord'sburg, so we could.
Okay. Can we, can we visit with Lord'sburg somehow? Hey, we're gonna be with Lord'sburg next Monday.
Next Monday.
Maybe we can bring it up there.
With Rand Carter.
I, I would, I would be, that would be, that would be comforting to me, I think.
Okay.
I think that would be more agreeable to me. That's a good idea. Yeah, talk to somebody who has used him and who has done it.
And done it that way, and the benefits.
Yeah, I would feel much better. I'd feel much better. Thank you.
Members of the board, we have a motion on the floor to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I would agree that I think tabling is probably the appropriate thing to do, or at this point, I think the presentation was a little bit awkward, and I would like to see some sort of document to, anything that we're approving, some sort of, something in writing as well, so I think that would be helpful. And moving forward with that, that decision. Any other discussion?
No, I just appreciate, you know, digging a little deeper when we're, when, when we're not comfortable with something, so.
Well, it's just so fortunate to have heard of such a thing, and then you hear it from only one source. I'd like to hear it from some, another source.
And I have to, to add, Ms. Voskis, your question about if someone was still with that ASA firm and they built Stout. When was Stout built?
Two thousand and two.
When was Stout built?
Not that long ago.
Two thousand and six, Mr. McMillan.
Stout was not.
The, the new portion.
The new.
Except for the gym. Except for the gym. They're always picking on me because I'm old. They're always picking on me. No, you know what? The new portion, the new portion. Just Stout. You're just a gym.
I went to Stout. That was a long time ago. Any further discussion? Seeing none. We've got a motion and a second to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion to table, item B passes. Next on our individual action items is item C, consideration and approval of proposed changes to the 2017-2018 increment schedule.
Okay. I have the information from our meeting with Mr. Diaz. Basically, what it came down to is they were asking for us to create some positions. They're not coaching positions. These are positions that would be helping in the classroom in lieu of hiring an instructional assistant. These, they would work for one period in that, and it's a strength in, in conditioning class. The class is available to both boys and girls, but as it turns out, the first-period class has been, is totally dedicated to men, to the young men in the, the district. And they are not only just football. It's football, basketball, wrestling, cross-country, I mean, whichever sport there is, they are able to go in there and do the strength and conditioning, you know, in that class, but there are sixty-plus kids in that classroom. We have a seventh-period class that is also strength and conditioning, and all of the girls seem to have migrated to that class, and that is, that has, I believe, Ms. Richard and Mr. Sekeros as the co-teachers in that class. And there's about forty girls in that class with, you know, two teachers that are there on hand to help them. And so Mr. Diaz's concern was with the safety and just actual, the attention that he can give to, to the students when you have one person stretched up, you know, across over sixty kids, where if we had two people that could come in and work with them in that timeframe and, and support him so that he can, you know, have a little more versatile instruction in, in the strength and training class. And the biggest issue being safety.
Any questions from the board?
Oh, I forgot to mention, pardon me. They are, increments would be class F increments, which are already set in the increment schedule at two thousand and eighty-four dollars annually, with half of it being paid in December and then half being paid in May at the end of the school year when the class is actually over.
And that's in our packet, too, I believe, correct?
Yes, yes.
Questions from the board?
How much would an aide cost us?
Thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars plus benefits. And benefits are generally as much as that or more, so probably about thirty thousand dollars.
Question for you. You say this is a non-coaching position, but could that stipend go to a coach that would be available?
An existing, anybody can apply for these positions.
Okay.
They're not designated to anybody in particular.
So I may not be understanding correctly. It doesn't seem like there's a change to the increment schedule, but rather, right? It's already defined in the increment schedule? We would just be giving that increment to?
These positions don't exist on the increment schedule as it stands.
Okay.
That's a decision.
Mrs. McCain, my recollection is that the last school board meeting, you had told us that there were gonna be some trading around.
And we did those.
Yeah, some trading around, and then there wouldn't be a difference in a dollar amount, so the board wouldn't have to approve it. So things have changed, and now there is an additional. So the only reason the board is looking at it is not to, only to approve the recommendation of administration that this happened because it represents a different dollar amount. Is that correct?
It's an increase to the budget, right? Because, you know, we had a set budget for the increment schedule, which you approved in the approval of our initial budget.
Right.
And now with adding these positions, it would actually be an increase to that increment schedule.
Okay. And so all those other changes that they were talking about is moving one increment to another place, then that, those changes occurred, and there was still this need to increase the total dollar amount of the?
Right.
Of the increment schedule.
Right.
And so, as, as is customary each year, as you prepare for the budget process, the increment schedule is distributed to the appropriate supervisors who are going to be appointing people or listing people on this, and all that was gone through, and none of this came up at that time. It's something that has happened since that time?
That is correct. It was just recently brought to administration's attention. So administration does strongly recommend approval of it. I guess my only concern, I absolutely agree that Mr. Diaz needs help. I guess my only concern is the, is what was brought up about the collective bargaining agreement, and, and whether we're gonna be doing this the right way, or if there's a step that we might need to take, and that's, I just don't know. I'm not, I don't, I haven't read Article fifteen, and so I guess that's my concern.
That's true. We all need to be familiar with that.
And I'm not sure what to do about that, because, because I think it's a, it's a pressing need. That's the issue, exactly.
Any other questions or comments?
My, my only comment is, and it just comes from the soccer community, because I'm on the Grant County Soccer Board, and there's been a lot of talk that, you know, we're not funding a JV team for girls or boys, and, and I've already discussed this with Mrs. McCain, is that, you know, we've done a lot of moving, and that is just not on here anymore. And so when parents tell me, you know, you're not funding a JV team, and I say, yes, we are, but then I look on here and it's not here, I understand that we've changed and redone the increment schedule based on kids attending, and right now, we don't have enough kids to be on a JV team for soccer. But with three hundred and eighty-five kids in the organization right now, I see in the, in the very near future that we would need to do that, and so it's just something that we need to look at the needs of our, of our population and be sure that, you know, when there are those people, that we can fund those, because we do have, you know, not only a head and an assistant and many, and a JV, and then a lot of other assistants for different sports. We just need to be equitable.
Can we ask Ms. Pustios a question? Would that be, I don't know if that's appropriate or not?
That'd be fine.
Is that okay? Ms. Pustios, do you see a conflict between this proposal and Article fifteen of the collective bargaining agreement?
Simply for the wording that it says that it will stay as is, so we would have to meet and talk about how we can arrange that and change the wording, or somehow come up with something that would say, you know, pending, you know, budgeting, or, you know, something to that effect. Because the language says that for the duration of that contract until June 30, 2018, that the increment schedule will stay at the rate that it's currently at. I mean, we're not opposed to needing to talk about it, to, you know, along with all of the other things that we talked about earlier. We're not opposed to it. We just need to make sure that it's being done correctly and that the steps are being taken and followed. So it was, it's something that we're gonna have to talk about at the table.
Question I have is, is the, it looks like the total amount of increments is four hundred and four thousand, seven fifty-four. Is that currently, I mean, is every position filled? Is that what we're, we've encumbered, I guess?
I honestly don't know if every position is being filled. Usually, we have an issue with, as the spring sports occur, we hire coaches, you know, because we have, you know, soccer has a high turnover of coaches, and so, you know, usually, we're scrambling to fill those positions throughout the year. So to say that it's actually complete, and I doubt it very seriously. Now, the positions are available, and they're out there waiting for somebody to fill them. They just have not been filled.
Okay.
And what this is asking is to actually make those positions available.
Right. Because these, these would increase that, that bottom.
If you're creating positions, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, we have to talk about. You know, like you said, we're not opposed to, to doing that, if we can find the money, you know, from somewhere. We're not trying to, you know, as a district, as a group, you know, we're not, as an organization, we're not trying to, you know, cut JV soccer, or, you know, cut something that is already there, but, you know, it's just a matter of moving the money around, you know, and changing the CBA to reflect, you know, the, the changing needs of our district.
It is my, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It is my hope that, that we can, similar to the, the issue that, that Ms. Pustios brought up regarding the, the D-level teachers and the needs that they have, I can tell you right now, the district one-hundred-and-ten percent supports ensuring that those teachers and those IAs have an opportunity to meet. They, they just don't have any, any time whatsoever to do so, unless we are able to work this out. And so we're definitely in support of that, as long as the students' individual IEPs are being met, of course. And I'm sure that, I'm confident, according to what I understand with the administration as well as Ms. Ruff, that that is indeed taking place. Something such as this as well, if it wasn't due to the student's safety being a concern, we would have time to go through and meet with the, the union to address the CBA issue. But if we're talking about student safety involved, and Mr. Diaz has approached us, I think that is something that we need to look at doing, and then maybe retroactively, meeting as early as tomorrow and just coming up with a change in the language or something. Definitely not opposed to that either.
Yeah. I mean, I recognize the need of a district to be flexible at times, and, and sometimes, you know, I'm not sure exactly the, the right thing to do, but I'm hoping that we can, that maybe everyone's concerns can be met, maybe retroactively, and because I also, I mean, to me, that is a huge safety concern that needs to be dealt with. You know, like you said, there's not really time to.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
When it was approached to us last month, I, I was actually a little scared, because that's two teachers with forty kids. I'm like, what happens if something happens tomorrow? Then the outpayout of the district for the district being sued's gonna be outrageous if that individual student gets hurt. So in respect to collective bargaining, I do respect where the wording has to be, but we have to think about our students first.
Oh, yeah, no. We're not putting that second at all. You know, it's just, you know, to have the discussion about it, you know, let's get it done, and, okay, agree or disagree, or whatever the case is, but then, you know, to put forth that fifth-eighth effort and continue what we've already started, to get it done, to make sure that the changes are in effect and worded the way they need to be, like I said, to suit the needs of, the needs of the district, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, that, that would be perfectly fine. You know, we can try and say, you know, two things come up tomorrow, we can talk about that and get that done, and then move on to the next thing. That's perfectly fine.
So make it retroactive.
Sure. Any other questions or comments from the board on?
Just a question, it's just curiosity. Those teachers with the DD kiddos, do they get a prep period, or they don't get a prep period?
No, ma'am.
No prep period?
No, ma'am.
Is it not a law or a rule that you have to have a prep period? No? No such?
I can tell you, districts throughout the state are in the same boat as we are. In APS, they, they give them, I believe it's a point one additional.
It's a, you, you're supposed to get two hundred and twenty-five minutes per week to prep, and then Sped is supposed to get an additional fifty-five minutes, I think, is what it says. I'm not for certain, but typically, in our CBA, it says that every teacher should have two hundred and twenty-five minutes for prep, of planning, a week. And we know that that's not happening at the elementaries, you know, and especially for the DD teachers, so.
So what they do, they end up buying their, their prep, basically, is what's happening in a lot of districts.
We're not currently doing that, are we?
At this point, we're not, in this district.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't catch that.
We buy, we're buying the prep.
Oh, you buy it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You give them extra, you pay them extra for giving it up.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
That's what some districts do.
That's correct.
All right. Very well.
You compensate, you compensate them for it, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha.
Any other questions on individual action item C, consideration and approval of proposed changes to 2017-2018 increment schedule? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve?
I move to approve the proposed changes to the twenty-seven, twenty-seventeen-2018 increment schedule.
I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, or, all those in favor of individual action item C, consideration and approval of proposed changes to the 2017-18 increment schedule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Next, under, on our agenda is item D, consideration and approval of graduation dates for Silver High School, Opportunity High School, and Cliff High School. And we were presented the information on Friday, the, or from each of the high schools, that they have a desire to hold graduation ceremonies on May eighteenth. Any additional information?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Administration?
In the past, this has been a contentious issue, correct? We're liable to hear about this? Okay.
What do you say?
What do I say? Well, I'll, I'll say that my daughter is the vice president of the senior class, and I received a text from her one day, and she said, he wants to, and I'll just tell you, she's a huge fan of Mr. Coker, but she's like, he wants it Friday, and I don't want it, and then he met with her, and she came home, and she goes, I'm fine with it, Mom. So, he is away, and everyone knows my daughter. She's very opinionated, so, um, as a mother on the board, it's gonna be hard for me, you know, to get all of them in there, but I took this position and this, knowing that, you know, there was gonna be conflicts, and Monday, I'm choosing her graduation, and it'll just, I'll have to spread myself thin. But I know that I've heard from the high school on numerous occasions that they would rather it be in the evening, you know, because of how hot it is. They all echo that with us. When I graduated, it was six PM, and the neat thing about this is I graduated on May eighteenth.
Oh, my goodness.
So, it's kinda cool. She found that in my yearbook at the high school.
Any other questions from the board, comments? On individual action item D, consideration and approval of graduation dates, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the consideration and approval of graduation dates for Silver High School, Opportunity High School, and Cliff High School, as presented.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those?
Crabs can't drive.
Outside of, Ms. Voskis is driving. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving individual action item D signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Last on our individual action items is the consideration, item E, consideration and approval of the proposed changes to the Silver Consolidated School District Wellness Policy, sections Social and Emotional Well-Being and Health Services. And then remember, we amended our agenda to add approval of language changes on page three and page twenty-five, and those language changes were given. and those language changes were given to us by Ms. Edwards, and highlighted on those Any comments from administration, the board, questions?
No sir.
Further information? I'll entertain a motion on item E.
Mr. President, I make a motion for consideration, action item E, for approval of the proposed changes to the Silver Consolidated School District Wellness Policy, adding language pages three and page twenty-five on the policy.
We have a motion to approve, item E is amended, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item E as amended signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Next on our agenda is future meetings and proposed agenda items, there are several meetings listed here, our next regular meeting is October seventeenth, with our work session as well being on October seventeenth at five thirty, I think on that agenda for that work session, we'll be looking at those policy advisory emails that we received, and I think they were, most of them dealing with, one of them was health policies, but there was a couple others, they were rather large documents, and I think we're looking at bringing one of the staff members from the policy advisory committee or organization with the New Mexico School Boards to come down and maybe help us navigate those policies. Then, of course, we've got our region meeting on Monday, and then I think we did receive emails for the annual convention, December first and second in Albuquerque, there is also the twenty eighteen Board Institute on February eighteenth through the tenth in Santa Fe, and the twenty eighteen School Law Conference in June, also June eighth and ninth in Albuquerque, and then, I believe that's the National School Board Association Annual Conferences in San Antonio, April seventh through the ninth in twenty eighteen. Next on our agenda is open public comments, did anybody submit any requests? Seeing none, executive session is next on our agenda, closed pursuant to ten dash fifteen dash one, H two through H nine, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, Mr. Brown, do you wish to speak to the board in executive session?
No sir, there's no need.
Mr. Brown does not have any items for us in executive session, so next on our agenda is adjournment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? Got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at times nine oh three.